Tuesday, September 22, 2020. I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order. As a reminder, on March 12, 2020, Governor Baker issued an executive order modifying certain requirements of the open meeting law to enable public bodies to carry out their responsibilities while adhering to public health recommendations regarding social distancing. The executive order relieves public bodies from the requirement in the open meeting law that meetings be conducted in a public place that's open and physically accessible to the public, provided that the public body makes provisions to ensure access to the deliberations of the public body through adequate alternative means. In this case, we're utilizing Zoom, and we've listed information for joining the meeting on the school district website. And as another reminder, this meeting is being recorded, both video and audio, and will be posted on the school district website. Before we begin tonight, I just wanted to mention that this week, we, a member of our Park Avenue family, experienced a house fire. And the team at Park Avenue, the district, and really the community is all rallying around her and her family. If there's any donations that people have of clothing or household items, they're appreciated, they're being accepted at Park Avenue. And I just want to publicly say that our hearts go out to the family, and we're keeping them in our thoughts. The first item on the agenda is a superintendent's report. And I know Dr. Gogan couldn't be here with us this evening, but Mrs. Perangeli, will you be delivering the report?
I will, thank you. I won't be as exciting as Dr. Gogan is with her spirit, but she would have loved to be here tonight, but she can't, so we're going to jump in and pitch in for her. First item on the agenda was personnel update. I am pleased to announce a few new hires. Nicole Barry, Special Education at Webster Middle School. Riley Hubner, Grade Eight Math at Webster Middle School. Rachel Taylor, Float Nurse at Park Ave Elementary. Jennifer Matthews, a STEM teacher at Webster Middle School. Jenna Johnson, a music teacher at Webster Middle School. So we wanted to welcome aboard all those new hires. I know they're certainly coming aboard during some crazy times, but I'm sure there'll be a fantastic addition. We also have a couple of transfers, or a transfer, I should say. Janice Romano is moving from a paraprofessional to an ABA tutor. We had a resignation this past week. Maria Reardon, a paraprofessional at Park Ave, has resigned. And as you know, when we started this school year, we had rift, laid off about 13 paraprofessionals. Since then, we have called four of them back, and two of them have declined, so that leaves us the remaining seven paraprofessionals out there that are still able to be called back. So we just wanted to welcome everybody. We hope all the transitions and everything are going well, and thank them for their dedication. We still have a few vacant positions across the district. I will inform you of those. We're still looking for a Special Education 18 to 22 Transitional Program at Bartlett. We're looking for a .5 ELL at Webster Middle School. We have an ABA position at Park Ave and Webster Middle School open. We're looking for a Special Ed Long-Term Sub at Park Ave, and we're looking for a foreign-language long-term sub at Bartlett. So we still have a little work to do with our hires, but we are plugging through, and we are getting there. Are there any questions about that? Hearing none, continue on. School opening, we started, we're here, we're back. The teachers were here bright and early on August 31st, but they welcomed the first students on September 15th back to the district. I believe, I think it was recognized from the staff, all that hard work we had over the summer getting ready, provided a safe and positive environment for teachers and students to come back. There were a lot of bright moments in the school this week. I think we were all excited to see some students back in the classrooms and hearing the bustle in the hallways and getting back. I know Dr. Gogan would be telling you right now, because she told me excitingly that she had popped into a few classrooms throughout the district, and she was really excited about a lot of the work that is being done remotely. But that's not to say we didn't have our issues. We also had our issues, we expected issues with technology. You know, we are struggling at certain points with technology, and I'll give you an update on that later in the meeting, but, you know, we're working through them one at a time, one at a time, trying to do our best. And it's, you know, it's comforting to know that it's not just here in Webster's, everywhere. Everywhere there are issues, it's a learning curve for all of us. You know, we were kind of just thrown into this environment, and in a perfect world, we would have had all the technology over the summer, people would have been here, would have been practicing, but unfortunately, that's not the case, so we're all doing the best we can, catching up and trying to adapt to this new learning environment. And I'm really proud at the way our staff has jumped in, and they're doing the work, and they're making the best of it. I've heard a lot of positives from our staff, and I just want to give them a shout out because this is all new, and they're learning on the fly, many of them, and they're doing a fantastic job with it. They're having bumps in the road, we expect that. We're all having bumps in the road. Here in the office, we're having those bumps, so I just want to give them a shout out and a huge thank you, and, you know, together and with the teamwork, we're going to keep problem-solving and keep working through those hiccups. Are there any questions about the opening of school? Would anybody like to comment on that? I know I see Fran here, I didn't know, or Heidi was here, I'm sure they're going to talk a little bit about their opening days. I know Heidi will, but overall, I think the opening has gone smoothly. Any questions?
No, I'll just actually add a comment as a parent. You know, I'm a lucky person that gets to see behind the scenes, all of the effort that goes into pulling off something like remote learning with elementary school kids, for example, which is what I'm witnessing, and it's been, you know, we're in our second week, and I had faith, but I wasn't really quite sure what to expect, but I have to say, it's gone amazingly well. The kids are so excited to see their friends, they love the teachers, and just the activities that are being presented, and the way that, you know, they're able to have opportunities to interact on a smaller group level and that type of thing, so, so far, so good. I know they're excited to see everybody, I'm sure they'll be glad to see each other in person at some point, but with that not being possible yet, this has been, it's been good on our end. Thank you for all the hard work that's gone into pulling this off. I know it couldn't have been as smooth for everybody, but we've been lucky. Are there any other thoughts or comments from the committee? Sorry to cut you off.
Okay, moving on. And other updates, we have a new student rep here with us tonight. Her name is Vivian Poplowski. Vivian, Doc, Mr. Thomas, Principal Thomas, had sent me some information about you, so I'm going to gloat over you for a few minutes and embarrass you, and then when you get there, if we've missed anything, you can fill us in on what we've missed. Vivian's not only an excellent student, but she's heavily involved with many extracurricular activities. She's a senior class officer and a member of the Girls' Varsity Socrates Team. She's also a member of the Nichols Honor Academy and puts her music talents to work as a member of the marching band, concert band, pit band, and show choir. She has consistently exhibited the maturity and leadership qualities which exemplify a Bartlett High School student, and will keep the school committee and entire community fully informed with regard to the ongoing events at Bartlett High School. Vivian, I just wanted to welcome you aboard. We're excited to have you, and we look forward to your input. It's always important for the committee and for us to hear feedback from a student's point of view. So I hope, I hope that you don't just sit back and listen, I hope you get actively engaged in some of our conversations, because I think your feedback is really important to the process and to the team. So welcome aboard, Vivian, thank you.
And Vivian, just on behalf of the whole committee, I just want to welcome you as well. We're really excited to have you and hear what you have to update us on, on a regular basis. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you, I'm really excited to be here and working with you guys this year.
I'm tired looking at your schedule, Vivian, so you'll keep us on our toes, I'm sure. In other news, we have had our fire drills by law, we're supposed to have fire drills within the first three days of school, so that has happened. Thank you to the fire department for coming in and doing their job, we appreciate that. Dr. Gogan also participated in a rapid response mobile unit, I believe the nurses might have been involved in that also. We have started our COVID leadership team. COVID leadership team is made up of our principals and our school nurses, along with Ms. Kathy Barris, myself, and the Board of Health, and Dr. Gogan. So we started meeting on those, and we're going to be meeting weekly, and just to touch base on what's going on, what's happening right, what's happening not right, what can we fix, what can we do better, how can we improve on things? I think it's important for us to continue, because we're all learning, this is, this is new for us, and things are changing, so having these weekly meetings and learning from them will help us proceed forward and keep, keep everybody safe and make sure we're handling things in the appropriate manner. So I want to thank everybody who's involved on that. We have also met with the union, and we are going to be offering a few extracurricular activities. We are going to be offering Student Council at the Webster Middle School and Bartlett High School, National Honor Society at the high school, Junior National Honor Society at the Webster Middle School, the Yearbook at the Webster Middle School and Bartlett High School, and Senior Class Advisor. So those are just a few of the happenings and updates going on throughout the district. As I've stated, it's been, we've only been back since the 15th with kids, but I think everybody's starting to find their groove, and we're working through, and we're going to make it work, we're going to make it happen, and we're going to have a positive school year, I can feel that.
Thank you, Mrs. Perangeli. Is somebody about to say something? Sorry, it sounded like I cut somebody off. Thank you for your update. It sounds like you're up next, Sue, for the Business Manager Report.
I am, and I'm sitting here in the dark, I don't know if you can tell, my lights automatically shut off, so if you see blinking, it's just my lights, and my arms might start flailing to turn them on, but that's okay.
You're not summoning help?
No, no, it's all good here, I might throw some things from time to time, but I still got daylight, so I'm okay. First item on my agenda is the School Building Committee update. I am really excited to say that it is moving along. The OPM has been very busy with the RFS. We had just received the Request for Services for Designer Selection Approval by the MSBA, so we will, we are advertising, and they should come out tomorrow, the advertisement for requests to be picked up. All those requests will go to the OPM. The Building Committee will be meeting on October 7th to get an update from the OPM, but it is moving along, so we are happy to hear that. The second item on my agenda is the boiler project. So the boiler project is moving right along. They have been here consistently for the last week or two, installing the new boiler. By law, we have to have the heat turned on and operational by October 15th, we will be meeting that deadline. They think they got about another week or two of work left, they're hoping maybe by the end of next week to be able to give the boiler a dry run, but I want to thank them for their hard work, they've been here every day. The room looks totally different, the boiler room, from what it used to look like, so we're excited to have at least a percentage of that. The company is also fixing something for us on the old boiler that we have left, there is a leak, and we need to have that repaired before we're to operational also, so they are working there, they're kind of multitasking here, they're handling two things at once for us, but it's moving along very well, so we're happy for that. And the other project that we have going on is our tennis courts. So as you know, as town meeting last May or June, I believe it was, our tennis courts were approved to be refinished. They have been here working on those for a couple weeks, they have power washed the courts and de-weeded, gotten rid of all of those summer weeds that have grown through all the cracks. They've pulled the posts out and refinished the posts, they've just recently re-cemented them back in, and they're letting that cure. After about a week, I believe they're going to come back and resurface, then it needs to sit for a while, and then they'll paint on lines, but that will also be going in soon, so we're excited to get that done. Timing-wise, it's all been pretty good without people in the building over the summer being able to get some of these items done, so that work will be coming to a finish sooner rather than later, so they've been good projects, and we look forward to having them finished up. And then, just in some other updates, I'm just going to update you about some technology that's been going on in the district. As I said, you know, we started for the last week, and there have been bumps in the roads, we're not going to lie. Most of the issues are connectivity issues, and it's not always a Wi-Fi issue or maybe an internet issue here. Over the past weeks, we have heard of Zoom outages, we have heard of Chrome outages, we have heard of Google Meet outages. I just think the market is really saturated right now, and the products they're still working through, we were just on a call today with Zoom, and they were updating us about some issues they're having with Chrome in the releases that they're coming out and the things they can do to fix these issues. So, you know, to say that the problem is one problem, it's not, it's not just one problem, it's just where there's multi-facet things going on, and as something comes up, we learn about it, we try and fix it, and we move on. I am happy to tell you that, as you know, we did not have Chromebooks for K-1, and they weren't scheduled to come in until middle of October, end of October. We got an excited phone call from the vendor on Friday, they received 320 of the tablets in stock, they turned them right around and shipped them to us. We had a FedEx delivery for today, which was postponed until tomorrow, but we are expecting the tablets onsite tomorrow, so we will be able to distribute them sooner rather than later to our K-1, so we're really excited about that. We've also, you know, just from watching the first couple of days, I'm looking for equipment, the rooms that we have set up are not always designed for this kind of environment that we have. You know, most of, a lot, many of our teachers have desktops where they're stationary, so they might be using a Chromebook around the room, some of the Chromebooks are older. As you know, it's difficult to get Chromebooks right now, the state, everybody's using Chromebooks across the state. We were lucky enough to procure 160 laptops. Those came in yesterday, so everything's coming in all at once. We are going to be turning them around and giving every teacher a laptop to help facilitate the needs in the classroom, so as they move around, they might have a little more flexibility and be able to move a little bit more. As you know, part of our remote learning was also our web cameras, they came in yesterday, so they're also here, or being deployed throughout the district. As you can see, if you look at my picture, I'm using one of the new web cameras now, I'm not using my laptop camera, I figured I'd give it a shot. And they also have built-in microphones to them, so they'll be able to use that technology, those were tagged and rolled out to the classrooms today. We've also received in our first batch of hotspots, so stuff is rolling in, it might be helpful it wasn't rolling in all at once, because we only have so many people to deploy it, but we're working through that technology as fast as we can, and I just, you know, I can't say enough that it's going to get better as the technology comes in and we can push it out, and people get comfortable with their surroundings and using the technology, it's going to get better every day. So to hang in there, we're working for you, and we're doing the best that we can to get you the tools that you need. So we're excited about all the technology that came in, and I'm excited to let you know about that stuff. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Perangeli, it's very exciting to have all that technology coming in and rolled out to the kids. Are there any other questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, the next item on the agenda is the Principal Report. Tonight, we have Heidi Peterson from Webster Middle School joining us. Good evening, Ms. Peterson.
Good evening, everybody. Probably going to reiterate some of the things that Monique had shared with you, because this time, we just have the opening of school going on, so not too much else at this point, but I want to start with professional development. As you know, our staff, our entire staff, participated in two full weeks of professional development before students came in. They spent entire days learning about technology and how to utilize technology, and how to utilize that technology to best teach children remotely, and then hybrid, once we moved to hybrid. We also participated in several mindfulness sessions, both for self-care and for student care, and also for families as well, so hopefully that will be very helpful for everybody. School opening went well, as Ms. Perangeli said, went very smoothly here at the middle school, we're very excited to have about 50 students in person with us. It's very quiet at lunch and in the hallways, and very eerie walking through hallways with not much chatter going on, so it would be nice to have some students, other students back in the building at some point. Our staff is ready to teach, they're excited to see their students and work with their students. I do want to give a huge shout out to our secretarial staff, Mrs. Tucker and Ms. Radlow, they have been fielding every single phone call that comes in, the second someone can't get on, online, the second they realize they don't have materials, they are dealing with everything that you could imagine, and then some, so they always do it with a smile on their face and a laugh in their heart, and I appreciate them, as I'm sure the teachers do, if they knew what was going on in the office every day. Tomorrow night, we will host our open house, our first virtual open house, so this will be interesting to see how this goes. We did post Zoom links for all staff members, both on Class Dojo, and I believe Mr. Kelly posted it on Facebook, I am not sure it got to our website yet, but, and teachers have also posted their links on their own Dojo pages, too, so hopefully there's enough information out there that parents will be able to log on. It is 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock PM tomorrow night, core teachers are running two sessions, an hour long, so from 6 to 7, and then 7 to 8, they'll run the same session, allowing for parents who have multiple students to be able to jump from grade level to grade level. The rest of us in the building will be having what we're calling open sessions, so we'll be open on Zoom for the whole two hours for people to pop in for Q and A. And that is all I have tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, the next item on our, on our agenda is our update from our student representative, Vivian Poplowski.
Hi, good evening. So I do a pretty short report tonight, just because there's not much going on activity-wise, but with finishing the first week of remote learning, we've found that the attendance policy has definitely made students attend classes more than last semester, but connectivity problems have been making it difficult for some students to learn, both on the teachers' end and on our end, that has served as a problem. Most clubs and after-school activities are still on hold at the moment, but there was an informational ban Zoom meeting on Friday, September 11th, that just talked about how the news department was going to move forward with all the COVID restrictions. And for athletics, the fall athletic signup Google form was set out on Friday, September 11th, and they're offering boys and girls soccer, golf, and boys and girls cross-country. And for upcoming events, some seniors have been working with the guidance department to start an online student-led after-school tutoring program that can take the place of university while we're still remote, and students will be able to get senior volunteer hours if they want to be a tutor for that, so it's going to be great all around. And that concludes my report for tonight.
Perfect, thank you, Vivian. Are there any questions or comments for Vivian from the committee? Hearing none, we will move on. Vivian, you are welcome to stay for the remainder of this meeting, if you would like to. I understand you probably have a whole lot of homework, and maybe a few other things on your calendar, judging by Mrs. Perangeli's introduction, so do not feel obligated to stay, if you need to tap out at any point, do so with our thanks for your update, but like I said, if you'd like to stay, you're very welcome. The next item on the agenda, under Old Business, is the Review of Safety Plans for Fall Sports. Is this Mr. Peranto?
Yes, I'm present.
Hello.
I believe that everybody receives the fall athletic plans, I think everyone should have had those in their packets, so instead of me going over it, then I'll just, I'll entertain any questions, I'm sure there is questions going out there. As I explained before, this is, some things change daily. I think I got a good, pretty good plan in place right now, we're still in the process of hiring our coaches right now for boys and girls soccer, boys and girls cross-country, and golf. So those are our, that's our task at hand right now, once we hire those coaches, I hopefully plan to do that by the end of the week, meet with all the coaches, and then we can start the ball going even faster. I know October 5th is approaching very quickly, but if you look in your package right there, I kind of explained what our opening procedure will be for practices. We're in the process of putting, you know, our game schedule is in that packet right now, also with the 10 games within our pod right now. We're very excited in our, in the athletic department, as well as our pods, you know, the pods have changed since maybe the last time we talked, we went a little bit more eastern mass now, in our 10-mile radius, rather than the western mass portion, but all my colleagues, the fellow weight athletic directors and those pods are, they're doing a great job, we all get along very well, and we're all working for one thing, to get these kids back on the field.
Thank you, Mr. Peranto. Are there any questions or comments from the committee?
I think it's important for everybody to know that this, we had a meeting initially for, to review the plan, and in that meeting was Kathy Pepin, the nurse, the principal, myself, Dr. Gogan, to review this, so it, it was looked at with health officials, and they do approve of the plan, so I think that's important to note that, that everybody's had eyes on this.
Thank you, Mrs. Perangeli. Are there any other questions or comments from Mr. Peranto?
Through the chair.
Mrs. Millitt, yeah?
I just want to express my concern over the addition of the sports we added to the program that we voted on last meeting. I think it was, we kind of rushed through it. We're seeing now that some towns that have started sports are beginning to see a higher COVID rating, and my, my comment is that I'm concerned we're starting some sports too soon.
Thank you, Mrs. Millitt. Are there any other questions or comments from the, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Peranto.
If I could jump in on that a little bit, I, believe me, I, I feel with Ms. Millitt there, too. If you look at the towns that are, that are, that are shutting their sports down, you know, Worcester, obviously the closest one that we have right now, you're talking about thousands of kids compared to our smaller community right now. Most of the schools around our area now have started up September 18th, which was last Friday. There hasn't been any concerns right now, I've talked to a lot of my colleagues that have started up. There hasn't been any concerns right now. I've talked to a lot of my colleagues that have started up right now. It's just the Southern West County League that has opted to start October 5th, so that way we could start the slow process a little bit. I know there's going to be bumps right there, as everything in this technology, as well as athletics right now. But we've taken a lot of precautions with all this. And we are, you know, we're trying to dot our i's and cross our t's with everything right now. It's not an easy process. You know, we're learning from the Eastern Mass schools that where they went faulty a little bit. And that's because they sent so many kids out in the field at one time. They had, they had multiple sports. They had football practices going on. They had, you know, volleyball, other than the sports that we're just offering, with cross-country soccer and golf right now. So they were throwing everybody out at one time, and they just couldn't control it. So I think that we're doing a pretty good job trying to control this atmosphere right now, especially on our fields. I think we have a good, pretty good plan in place right now. And, you know, talking with Jen, our board of health agent, she's confident that we have her in place right now. And we're looking forward to these kids getting on the field. We're all concerned. Obviously, this is, this COVID has taken everyone by storm right now. And we're, we're trying to do the best we can for these kids right now, and with all safety measures in place right now.
Through the chair, I have a question for Mr. Peranto.
Go ahead, Mrs. Millitt.
My question is, do you have transportation for students who don't normally have it to get to practices or games? Because a lot of students would go to these activities right from school, and they're not there. So my concern is, students who really want to participate or have participated in the past will not be able to get there. Do you have any plans for help for that?
Well, I can answer that question, just like we have in the past right now. We have weekend practices, which parents are normally working whatnot to. They, the kids can get to, they get to their practice facilities or games that happen on weekends during the regular basis. And then during vacation weeks, the kids still get the practices. We also have practices that take place later on in the evenings before, after kids go home. So they have been able to get back here for practices or games during that time. So I don't believe that will be a problem. We have about 90 kids signed up right now currently that are looking forward to be playing in these sports. And that's not even the ones that we're offering later on for October 12th. That's why we tried to start slowly with the sports that these kids will be engaging in their competitive play right now. And then that the fall two season, we look at those coaches, get involved with the kids for a 10-period session only. We haven't even started those signup periods for that yet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Peranto, do you feel that you've had sufficient time to plan for this first round of sports that's going to be starting? And I mean, I read through the plan. It looks comprehensive to me. But are there any concerns that you have going into this with regard to the timeline or the planning or anything like that that we should be aware of?
Not really. We've been doing our due diligence with this right now. I've been working right along, hoping that we'd be able to start. You know, just hiring these coaches right now, training them. As long as we can get this taking place by the end of the week, I think we were, I think we're aligned to get them started for that October 5th startup date.
Okay.
If I could?
Yeah, Mr. Thomas?
Hi. In addition to Mr. Peranto, the SWICO principals have been meeting on sports since about like last June on this plan and how we could offer sports in conjunction with getting students back in the school. So we have not only met as a group as principals, we met with all the athletic directors in the SWICO, with MIAA, with District 2 representatives. So this has been a well-fought-out plan. The schedule is well-fought out. The geographic representation is well-fought out, so that if, should there be an instance, it will be much easier to track. And as Mr. Peranto said earlier, the numbers that we have involved in sports, I believe cross-country has like maybe nine boys signed up and seven girls. So we're not talking about flooding the field with hundreds and hundreds of kids. So there are a lot of advantages to being a small school and competing in the SWICO. But this has not been something that just cropped up, you know, in the last two or three weeks. This has been something that has been ongoing. The ADs have been working with it from their angle with MIAA and the MIA Safety Commission, the CDC guidelines. Principals have been working with it, and then we've been working jointly to make sure this is as safe as we can possibly make it. But I think it's, as Vivian is involved in so many activities, in a town like Webster, a lot of our kids only come to school because they're involved in these extracurricular activities. And I was looking at our attendance right now. We have some blips in attendance because students who weren't able to get logged on, we weren't marking them absent right away. But we're at about 85, 86% as near as we can tell. And I think that once we get some kids involved in things, it's going to make them more inclined to participate in school. And everyone is fully aware that one case or one suspected thing in the season could go away right away. I mean, everyone goes in with the understanding of that. That is our goal, that we will complete these seasons. But we understand that safety comes first, and that was woven into our plan from the very beginning.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I mean, it's clear that there's been a lot of thought put into the plan, but just want to make sure that there isn't any underlying unease about the timelines and, you know, all of that. Are there any other questions or comments from the committee? Okay, we already approved those plans. Am I right in mode? Are you looking for a motion to approve these plans?
Nope.
Moving right along. Excuse me, sorry.
No, I said we're all set. We don't need one. So it was just a review of the protocols.
Perfect. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the reassessment of school plans. Mrs. Perrinelli?
Thank you. So as you know, when we started the school year, and we started in remote, we said we were going to come back to the school committee on September 22nd, talk about the opening, and reassess moving forward about moving to a potential hybrid. As you know, with the start of sports on September 8th, we feel that it has kind of pushed us a little bit towards the hybrid model. As you know, Dr. Gogan started out the school year with a plan in place. Her plan was to move slowly, to make sure we had staff on board, staff that felt comfortable with the new surroundings and the new protocols in place before we were able to bring the kids back. She wanted the staff to feel comfortable and feel safe and feel good in this surroundings and review our protocols as we're working through and start small before we jumped right in. With the start of sports, it kind of makes us feel like it's expediting the process a little bit. So we're moving in a little more quickly with that. On September 16th, the COVID leadership team met with the Board of Health to discuss the first day of school and any measures that have been going on and anything we have in place, along with the proposed sports and competitive golf, cross-country, soccer, and practices for the other sports. Those were cheerleading, volleyball, and football, which is a higher-risk sport. Even though we have many safety protocols in place to minimize the spread of COVID-19, the leadership team, or the COVID leadership, this isn't one person making a decision. This is a team looking at all this data, recognizes that they're going to be ongoing safety challenges with stopping the spread. We also realized that with sports starting up, it's going to be difficult to have students playing sport but not coming into school to learn. They go hand-in-hand. If they're okay to come into school to be on an athletic field, they're okay to come into school to learn. So with that being said, the group has made a decision to look to move to a hybrid model for all schools across the district on October 19th. Now again, we are assessing data weekly, more than weekly. We are assessing data daily. And this COVID team is meeting weekly to look at the data. So as far as the recommendation goes with October 19th, there are still things that could get in the way of that October 19th start date. There are things that have to happen and stay consistent with that. Our numbers need to remain low in Webster, our COVID-19 numbers. We have to make sure that there hasn't been any kind of outbreaks in our school system. And we have to make sure the Board of Health is on board with this prior to the opening of school. So our plan moving forward is to continue. We're shooting for the October 19th date. That's what we're going to look for. But we are going to be meeting weekly and communicating with families should something spike or get in the way of that opening. And we would inform everybody of that decision moving forward. The COVID team that met, and again, that was the building principals, that was the health team, our nurses at the school, myself, Dr. Gogan and Kathy. It was pretty unanimous that we wanted to open schools and get kids back on the 19th. So that would be the recommendation right now. And like I said, keeping, keeping an eye to everything closely and working with our community, the Board of Health, moving forward to make sure that we are still in the position to open school the week before on October 19th. So if the school committee approves the proposal to move hybrid on the 22nd, we're going to start to communicate this out to the community, to our families, to our students and staff. And we will notify everybody of any changes no later than October 16th.
Thank you, Mrs. Perrinelli. Are there any questions or comments from the committee?
Ms. Siddiqui?
Mrs. Blythe?
Hi. Ms. Perrinelli, I don't know if you can completely answer this in Ruth Ann's absence, but I'm interested to learn about the data and the metrics that we're going to measure this against, right? What's our sweet spot? What's our goal that we're looking to strive to in order to achieve a hybrid model for October 19th?
Well, it has to meet the three criterias. The Board, we can't see any spikes in the town of Webster. So you know the metrics where you're going a white, green, red, yellow. We're going to be following those guidelines and looking at that. We're also going to be looking at any spikes that we may see in school. So if we're getting clusters, that could delay, delay the opening if we have any breaks. So all of this is going to be done in conjunction with the Board of Health as we move through.
Okay. And kind of to piggyback on that, for remote learning, because as I understand it, parents are going to have a choice to keep their students remote versus sending them in hybrid. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So could you explain the protocol around that? Meaning what I'm asking is, say I choose that my child stays home remote. How long does my student have to stay home? Is it by term? Is it a semester? So what are the guidelines around that? Because I'm sure that that will play a role in our numbers for hybrid.
When we initially sent out the correspondence, I think we said when you selected, it was for the first term. And then you could reassess after that. It does play into a bigger picture for many things, for class sizes, for transportation. All of that plays in. It's, what we're finding right now, even looking, because when we've requested and we sent out the surveys of who was coming back and we placed them in cohorts. So we're tracking the cohorts carefully now, because on certain cohorts, certain days, there might be buses that are full. So I need to know that, you know, one or two kids can tip, can tip that to me having to change routes and put things on. So it's, it's changing, and it's something that we're watching closely. But we are looking at it, and we did ask for the first term, if you were making that decision. I believe it was term one. But, you know, we're taking those calls now, and people are asking, you know, oops, we want to come back. Can we come back? So we're taking them in.
Okay, okay. Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the committee?
Through the chair. I just wondered, Monique, because you made such a pointed connection between sports and moving towards hybrid. Do you not think we would have moved towards hybrid at this point?
Um, no, I don't think. I think we might have, because where school was delayed, you know, we initially thought that kids were going to be coming back after Labor Day, which would have given us more time. And with the delay for the teachers, I think we would have maybe waited a couple more weeks to assess and get that data back, to make sure we've had our C cohort, because our kids have only been here one week, right? They've only been in the building. So I think we would have looked for three or four weeks of data to come back and say, look, this is going great, or we've learned from this, or those kinds of things. So I think it's definitely sped up our process.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from the committee?
Through the chair.
Mrs. Millitt?
I have to say, the questions by my fellow members have been very good and have made me think about this. And once again, it feels like we're rushing into a decision too soon. Not that we have to wait for a very long time, but I think it's now being steered by sports when that is not what it's about. It's about safety. And I really don't think we have all the answers we need yet. That's just my comment.
Through the chair. The only comment is that we're not the only community. I mean, there's a lot of communities around us that have opened up in a hybrid model. So I'm not sure if there's been any information from those schools about how that's been going. But it's not like we're the only school system that's in a remote and there's no one else in that hybrid model. I think that we can learn from them over the next four weeks. I also want to point out the fact that Worcester went from a hybrid model back to a full remote, not due just to the school system, but it was because the entire city had an outbreak. It wasn't specifically due to sports that in Worcester. It wasn't due just to the school system. So I think we have to keep that into account also.
Mr. Adamopoulos. Are there any other questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the plan that was put forth to move to a hybrid model for all schools effective October 19th, 2020, pending any changes.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Lori, would you pull the committee, please? Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
No.
Member Adamopoulos?
Yes.
Chairperson Siddiqui? Yes. Motion passes. The next item on the agenda under New Business is the acceptance of a donation from St. Constantine and Helen Orthodox Church. This is Perrinelli.
Ms. Glennon, can you remind me what that donation was? I don't have it in my notes. I can't find it.
Yep, absolutely. We received 40 backpacks that were filled with school supplies, and those were all delivered to Park Ave Elementary School. We did send a thank you note to Father Luke, and the donation has been put up on our website.
Great. Are there any questions or comments from the committee about this donation? I would just like to express our sincere thanks to the church. They come through for us time and again, for our students. And it's much appreciated. On behalf of the committee, I will entertain a motion to accept this donation.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you? There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Naprata? Member Millet?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes. The motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the acceptance of a donation from Life Song Church.
Thank you. Uh, Life Song Church donated child masks and school supplies, erasers, bags and notebooks. And we would like to accept that donation and thank them very much for, um, for the items that we received.
Thank you, Mrs. Perangeli. Are there any questions or comments from the committee about this donation? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept this donation.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Millet?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
And Chair Siddiqui?
Yes. The motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the acceptance of a $5,000 donation from Cureleaf.
Thank you. Uh, we've received a phone call from Cureleaf a couple of weeks ago expressing their wishes to donate $5,000 to the school department for the purchase, to help with the purchase of PPE supplies. Um, so we would like to accept that $5,000 donation and we thank them very much for this continued support. They did donate last, last year, if you remember, the censors in the high school. So, uh, we appreciate the continued support of the school department in Webster.
Yeah, once again, um, another organization that's come through for us. Once again, with another donation. So I'd like to express our thanks on behalf of the committee as well. Um, are there any questions or comments from the committee about this donation? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Millet?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes. The motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the acceptance of a donation of hand sanitizer and face shields from Gentex.
Thank you. We did receive a generous donation from Gen, Gentex. We received nine five liter jugs of hand sanitizer, 10 fully assembled face shields and 140 replacement shields and 40 additional bands. That go with those. So we want to thank them for their donations and we will put them to good use. We are certainly putting our PPE to test. So thank them for that.
Once again, um, much appreciated. The PPE is something that is, um, always necessary in these times. So thank you to Gentex. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve or to accept the donation of hand sanitizer and face shields.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Millet?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
And Chair Siddiqui?
Yes. The motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the approval of memorandum of agreement with the instructional assistance COVID-19 related.
We are going to table that. Um, we are not ready. It was, we did meet and we did come to tentative agreement, but it hasn't been proofed by everybody yet. We, so once we do that, we'll bring it back to next meeting.
Sounds good. Moving right along, we will, um, move on to item F, which is the approval of increase of BCBA from a point nine FTE to a full 1.0 FTE. Mrs. Perangeli?
Yep. Uh, Mrs. Barris is here. I would be happy to let her speak to that.
Good evening, everyone. I think in your package, you have a memorandum that I provided you with the justification for the increase in, um, in the, point one FTE for the, um, BCBA. The focus of that extra half day will be for the Park Ave Elementary School Early Childhood Program. When we had gotten the second BCBA position for the district, it was a 1.0. And the person who was in the point nine position moved over to that position. So, um, you know, it's remained a, a point nine up until now. With the increase in supervision and ABA services that, uh, we require, especially with the addition of the telehealth model for our remote students. We've had a definite need for the increase in the, um, in that half a day, uh, for consultation and oversight and supervision. So do you have any questions?
Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the increase of, um, the BCBA from point nine to a full FTE.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Millet?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Welcome. The next item on the agenda is the approval of additional 1.0 FTE for an ABA position. Mrs. Barris, is this you again?
It's me again. I'll just take it, Monique. Um, so as the memorandum described, we, um, I think in the last, um, budget discussions, there were two vacancies, um, for ABA positions in the district. One was at the middle school. Um, with all of the cohort students coming in and after further assessment and the movement of, um, ABA staff from, um, elementary to middle and middle to high school. We determined that we were a position short and, um, will require this, um, it's basically putting that position back into the budget, um, to cover that, um, that need for inclusion students. Um, I don't know if you had any questions regarding the memo and the funding source, but, um, you know, basically what we will do is, um, is basically put a position from the local budget into the special education grant, which will free up funds for, uh, us to pay for that ABA position out of the local budget.
Ms. Barris, are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the additional 1.0 FTE for the ABA position.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Millet?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
And Chair Siddiqui?
Yes. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you again.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the appointment of a school committee member to the custodial union council 93 contract negotiations. Mrs. Perangeli?
So we
Anything about this?
We received a letter, um, from the custodial union requesting that we enter into negotiations. For the contract that expires on 6/30/2021. So, uh, we will need, um, a school committee representative to participate in those negotiations.
You. At this time, I'll entertain any nominations for school committee members to, um, bargain with the custodial union.
Madam Chair?
Not Mrs. Naprata?
I'd like to nominate Sheila Blythe to, um, participate in the negotiations with the custodians.
Second.
Okay, we have nomination and a second from Mr. Adamopolis. Thank you. Any further discussion? Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Millet?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes. The motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the approval of amended policy EBCFA face coverings. Mrs. Perangeli, can you walk us through that policy?
Sure. It looks, uh, you should have had a copy of it in your pocket. You can see the changes that are highlighted in red. In the second paragraph where it said face coverings that cover the nose and mouth. And it was added insecure under the chin must be worn at all times. So we can't be walking around just covering our mouth and a nose. They need to be under the chin. Um, and then in the third paragraph, you will see a change there and add, um, the CDC does not recommend the use of gators or face shields. Evaluation of these face covers is ongoing and the effectiveness is unknown. So these types will not be allowed as a sole mean of protection. So not just a face veil, not a gator. You need the actual face mask.
Thank you, Mrs. Perangeli. Are there any questions or comments from the committee about the amendment to this policy? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the amendments as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Millet?
Yeah.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
And Chair Siddiqui?
Yes. The motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the review and transfer of warrants, bills, payroll and vouchers. Are there any questions or comments about, um, the warrant? Oh, you'll need your designees in to sign, I assume?
Yes, please.
Bringing that, we've been brought to the end of our agenda. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Millet?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Have a nice evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.